Oh, yes, yes, he is. I'm sorry, I was thinking. I don't see him yet. That's what I said, I don't know how we're supposed to go through the questions if...
Is that?
No? She's just reading the line and can't be...
Yeah, I'm into Purdue.
Oh, she's into the Purdue. She's reading some of this.
Two minutes.
Yes, I was wondering if we're gonna do this.
She had some kind of a attack, there's something about money, she's actually going in so fast it just swept. It's not powerful, man, it's just borderline, it's just a beautiful. Yeah, she is. It's just a little bit obscene, I think, if you can't see that far.
She didn't, like, she didn't make that. Just recently.
It's sad, but she was trapped, I mean, she stayed twenty, thirty feet, and she was...
We have no questions. Okay. That's enough. It's nonvaluable. This is gonna be fast. Nope. This is gonna be fast, the only question. I understand it's not the worst here, but it's nothing to do with it, right? Everybody else just wants to talk. This really hasn't chilled out. It's chilled out.
Okay, thank you so much.
How was it? So cool. Wow. No relevant questions, so, to the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, I'll call a meeting to order for the Plan Commission Public Hearing on the Subdivision Ordinance. If we will all stand, we'll start with a pledge. Laurie, would you lead us in the pledge? And Kevin will lead us in the prayer. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. Father, another opportunity that you give each and every one of us. Father, I pray that you'd be with us this evening as we go through this meeting, Lord, and we hear people's concerns. And Father, I pray that you just give us wisdom in our words. Lord, I pray that you would just lead and guide, as only you can, because we can do nothing without you. And Father, I pray that you just bless this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Thank you. All right, board members, I assume you've had time to review the minutes of the last meeting. And I'll give you a minute or so to look over them again. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, the September meeting.
We didn't have a September meeting.
You're right. It would be the...
Were those sent to us by email, or are they posted on the internet?
August meeting, sorry. Thank you.
Are these posted on, are these posted on the internet for the public, or is it after they get approved, they get posted?
They are, they are.
On page two of four, the first sentence of the second paragraph, Lori Gilstrap's name is misspelled.
Amen. We'll take note of that, make a correction.
And Laurie, you would know, was that your grandfather?
No, that was my husband's mother.
Husband's mother, okay.
Husband's grandmother.
Husband's grandmother, not your grandfather, okay. Husband's grandmother. Husband's mother.
Are we addressing the changes now?
Yes.
Okay.
Need an approval based on the change. I'll entertain a motion.
Something.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Danielle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is an important part of our process. People do have a voice, and this is why we're here. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. First of all, I'd like to just go around and make sure everybody knows who is on the board. If you'll notice, if you got a copy of the agenda, I'll just go right down the list. To my left is Lisa Fleming, our attorney, Travis Elliott, the building commissioner, Emily Rodman, county surveyor Danielle Walker, representing Purdue Extension, myself, Todd Young, Andrew Davidson is absent this evening, he's a council member, Mr. David Lyles, Mr. Kevin Baird, Ms. Marcia Daly, Lori Gilstrap, and Lucy Britt. Thank you. Okay, the way this is gonna work, we're gonna start out, we're gonna give everyone who wishes to an opportunity to speak and voice their opinion, have questions and concerns. Once everyone in the audience who wishes to speak is finished, then after that, in the end, we will address your concerns and questions then. So I have on the list here, if you would come forward, Mr. M.A. Wimmer. You don't wish to speak, okay? Okay, bear with me here. The only other one who wished to comment was Rhonda Green and Max Green. This subject matter does not pertain to a public hearing tonight, it's something about illegal boards. So we will not hear that.
He signed up. He signed up.
I have to speak on this, this proposed only ordinance itself.
Okay.
Then I give my time to him.
Come forward, Max. I'll let you speak. As long as it pertains to...
It does pertain to this.
Okay.
Under Indiana Code, I see thirty-six, seven, four, seven, oh, two. Subdivision control ordinance must contain minimum width, depth, areas, and lots of a subdivision, public ways with raised curves, and conditions of subdivision, public ways, and current and planned ways, and extension of water sewer, and other municipal services. The old subdivision control ordinance that is currently in effect spells all that out. It has the grades and the curves, and it has a three-inch waterline, and it has the lot width and depth. And this new subdivision control ordinance does not have the concrete standards, which is required by the state of Indiana. And if you look at the case law on these different ordinances, it must have concrete standards, rather than referring to another document or to another individual to make the determination on whether it's illegal or not. And it also, in this new one, it says if you have a problem with the passing of a minor subdivision, you can always go back and ask to be heard, but... Statutes requiring the local legislative body must be adopt subdivision control ordinances, which regulate subdivision of land and use zoning discretion, and which provides concrete standards for the, to be in effect. Also, as talking to Travis, he, he has the, the one acre minimum is not really the true intent here if the ground's not flat enough to do that. In, in this, other case studies here, if the ground is not suitable due to geographic areas, because too much slope or whatever, they can be considered, because of health and safety, that they can't be used for residential purposes. His intent not to the one acre minimum be set in stone so much as the requirement that it be flat enough ground to do all the stuff that will road running and access required under law.
That's time. That's three minutes.
I'm done.
He has my time.
Yes, and they are allowed to combine their time. I'll start that over.
Here's a testimony of adjacent landowners adhering on proposed subdivision flat. It's irrelevant in establishing whether the flat commit complies with the master plan, ordinances, and or statutes. So if the subcommittee decides to approve a minor subdivision, because it meets the standards, asking to tell the public they can come in and have their say means nothing, because the state code in said that it already is valid. So I'm saying we need to go back and look back at the previous subdivision control ordinance and do some tweaking on it, because it actually says it, any division of ground for one plot in two or more is a subdivision, and we need to go ahead and add to that that you cannot create any non-conforming uses, and that's when you divide property. And that was part of what we got into on setback distances, and what we brung up to on the manure storage buildings and everything, and the confined feeding, where they could divide the ground off even though it would meet, no longer meet the standards, we need to look at that. And we can also go to the end where it says you have to be a relative, and you can split two pieces of property. You can go back to the main, this new ordinance has, you can split up to five times. And that's perfectly acceptable. It needs to be looked at and updated and brought into play. But for what the state requires, this old subdivision control ordinance actually spells out everything in hard language, even on the runoff water, and if you can't build up your property, runoff water on your neighbor. And it gets, it's a good document that needs to be worked through by itself, instead of the feel-good that, for public safety and whatnot, without having a specifics saying to close the grade, or to close the slope, or to close the, whatever does require to do that. And also, as far as easements, to get to the ground, you need to look at easements and shared driveways, because that is for public safety, is where the highway department needs to decide. You can't put a driveway in a blind curve just because you have one acre there. So we need to have some sort of arrangements where that can be dealt with, because part of what they brought up before is that there are too many people sharing driveways, and nobody wants to share the price of the gravel and whatnot on them. And that, that does need to be addressed, but that was something that come about from this previous ordinance where it said no more than ten driveways per mile. So the county kind of set herself up for a thought on that one, forcing people to do things they probably normally wouldn't have done. So I'm thinking we need to go back and look through scratch and do it right, and report it because the state said it. But I looked at it, and I couldn't find any minimum lot depth in what I read there. So I'm, that's where I'm at, but it's not ready. It needs to be... And, and also, when we first, this first went over to Jackson County, we're not gonna call it over to F.
You exceeded your time, Max, for both you and Rhonda, but thank you.
We were told we don't call that.
Hey, one of the things I noticed, just for the other Plan Commission members along with me, is that as I've tried to listen to the live streams, and as I've also tried to listen to the August meeting in preparation for our meeting tonight, I noticed that very few are putting their microphone in a spot that's actually picking up by the equipment. So I would appreciate it, just for myself, maybe I'm hard of hearing, you know, whatever. But I think it's really important that we all speak into the microphones, because the reason we have this live streaming law is that there are people that are disabled, like my husband, very difficult for him to come in here. And I'm sure that he and other people that couldn't make it here tonight would like to be able to listen to a recording that's audible. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Connor Barnett and Mr. Daniel Bland to come forward and address these concerns that Mr. Green has reassured him that these things are, in fact, in the document.
Good evening, everybody. There's a lot down the back there. I think starting with the minimum depth. So we've obviously established that the minimum lot width of one hundred and fifty feet, the minimum acreage, or minimum lot area at one acre. It's, in my opinion, I, I, it's apparent the Greens don't agree with this, but that the minimum lot depth would definitely be implied off of your minimum acreage and minimum range. Typically, this would reference your zoning ordinance and your setback dimensions as well, and those would need to be met. But, you know, if that's something that you guys want to amend tonight, if you plan on improving this and saying for hearing with the commissioners, I think you could amend, make a motion to amend the ordinance to have a minimum lot depth, if that's a concern the board has.
Where is the minimum width established in the document?
Yeah, it's in, it should be in every section, so there's the administrative, minor, and major. They set minimum lot widths and acreages in each one of those sections. I've got a document full of, give me what's said, Lucy, I'll tell you where that's at. It's like administrative, which would be section, or under applicability.
Yep, that would be page four. And you're saying that the administrative is when a family wants to get together and just subdivide it to five parcels?
Yeah, so anything five parcels or less, and then include your parent tract, yes, ma'am? And then we have in there an exception for ten acre parcels as well. So anything over ten acres is exempt, and it does not count against that five. But anything smaller than ten, subdivided out of a parent parcel, will count against that, that five tract maximum requirement.
Got it. And this is completely voluntary for families to do?
Can you allow that?
What I want to make sure is that this is something that's not going to affect families who say they want to build a second, a second home on the same parcel. There's been some discussion about that in the last few meetings, where if somebody wants to build a second home on the same parcel, there seem to be people that wanted to force them to parcel that out into a distinct parcel.
Yeah, and that is in the current subdivision control ordinance, that no more than one residential structure can be all a piece of property. That's, that's an existing ordinance that's on file.
Yeah, I didn't read. Do you know where that is in the existing ordinance?
I don't have it for me, no. It's page two.
Page two of the existing ordinance?
Page two, A, section one.
I wonder if I'm looking at the same thing you are for the previous ordinance. I got it off of the website, Washington County's any ordinance table of contents, general information, section one hundred. Is that what you see?
I'm sorry, I'll have a copy, Lucy.
Okay, I just like to really make sure we've got all our ducks in a row, because what we're doing can affect a lot of people in a very substantial way.
I agree. I believe in a positive light, just with some of the issues we see continuously over here. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions and talk through some of these issues.
I appreciate that. I'm trying to keep families from being burdened or getting into undue costs, because, you know, somebody sitting at a desk somewhere thinks they should do something.
Yeah, totally understand. Well, we see a lot of this, families subdivide a piece of property and have a legal description written instead of a survey proposal, which the ordinance requires, and then their house sits over the property line. And that creates a much more substantial burden than having the property surveyed.
Is there, is there an alternative? I'm sorry, did I, did I get turned off here? Okay. Is there an alternative way to make sure that that person doesn't go over the line? And this is my thinking. A survey is a great expense, and a lot of families can't afford it. And they shouldn't be forced to do a survey on property that they already own. As I understand it now, I could take my plat in, and we could, if I had ten acres, we could, like, draw on it, and that that would be entered, and my kids would have, you know, two acres, two acres, whatever. But, under the new ordinance, they would be required to hire a surveyor.
So, I mean, currently, you can't bring a plat in and hand draw your parcels. You would have to have a legal description prepared by attorney, and then that property would be transferred via quick claim or warranty deed from the owner to the, to the person, 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 purchasing the property.
So I could spend about five hundred bucks with a good attorney, have them write the legal description, take that off in the deed, and then, at that point, I'd be done. But under the new ordinance, what is a baseline? My surveys always came with the property from the title company, so what does a baseline survey cost? Give me your range.
It's really all over the board, because of what work's been done in the area, the section corners, what your deed that is already in existence, you know, what that consists of. Anywhere from, I would say, eighteen hundred dollars to over ten thousand dollars, depending on what issue it is.
So we could possibly...
Very rare, and that's very rare, and it depends on what the scope of the work is. But I think it's important to mention that the reason I think the county's in the situation it is is because deeds have been written by attorneys for years and years and years, and they're not correct.
Are you saying attorneys aren't competent to write those deeds and have them be effective later?
No, what he's trying to say is that they go off established lines that maybe over the centuries they've moved the fence back and forth. I got to the same situation. They, it cost me eight hundred dollars to get my property surveyed, because they already had a couple of existing pens.
How long ago was that?
This corner was off fifteen feet, this corner was off seven, so you gotta move, and a problem you get into, and I've had this happen many times, you think your property's here, you put a septic system on it, and then you find out your septic system's on your neighbor. So there's a lot of issues that come up with not having a good survey.
Oh, yeah, I love surveys. I've been a real estate investor for over thirty years. I am a fan of surveys. I'm not a fan of forcing people to buy a product they don't want. And if we've got families that have ten acres, and it would be pretty simple for them, you know, let's just say it's simple, they've got a rectangle, and they're gonna divide ten acres up into five two-acre parcels, including that parent, so they're within the current ordinance. But then if we require a survey to be done, that family's gonna face a really large expense. And I don't think it's up to us to force something on them. I mean, I think that, you know, they should be advised to get one. People do things that maybe they shouldn't do all the time, but it's their choice. I'm not their parent. I'm not here to tell them what to do.
A couple, couple things. So that's absolutely all I'm saying regarding attorneys. However, it does take one lone call by one attorney to create a problem. And then if another attorney comes in and writes a new subdivision for a new deed off of that deed, you're just compounding on the problem. So, I mean, you could have ten great attorneys, write a great description, but all it takes is one to mess that up, and then they're subdividing out of that parcel, and that just keeps compounding the issue. Secondly, I agree, you should go do with your property what you want. But if you don't get a survey, and we don't know where the property lines are, and then you build a home that's over the property line, and now it's on your neighbor's property, that is creating an issue, not just on your family farm, or what you think the property lines are, but now you're over the line. And now it's a problem for you and your landlord.
Are people going to be required to get a permit to build that structure that could potentially be over the property line?
Yes, ma'am.
Then why wouldn't we have them get a survey then?
How's your building commissioner gonna know where the structure's going in relationship to the property lines if no one knows where those lines are?
I mean, this is, this is a big problem to solve, but I'm trying to solve it in a way that doesn't affect the individual statistically as, you know, three to ten thousand dollars or more. I mean, this is, I wouldn't want to pay it.
I would say purchasing a property is one of the biggest, and building a home is one of the biggest expenses that you'll ever take on in your life. Spending a couple thousand dollars on a survey to make sure you know where that property lies, and where your structure that you're building falls in relationship to those property lines is a drop in the bucket compared to what you're purchasing, or what the price you're paying for that property in the build of this home.
Yeah, potentially, I see that, but some of us have smaller buckets than others. You know, I don't have a big bucket to draw it up, so I'm going to be concerned about the normal citizen and making sure that then we don't put an undue burden on them.
I understand your concerns.
Do you have any idea how many counties in the state of Indiana require a survey?
Have a subdivision control ordinance, Todd?
Yes.
I, I don't. I know it's substantial, but I don't have that information.
Okay, any other things that Mr. Green mentioned, if you had a chance to jot them down? Would you like to address it?
As far as the street interroad standards, those are not specifically outlined in this order. If you guys remember, we discussed that. We contacted the highway department about those standards. I think there were some changes being made, or that was being reviewed. I can't remember the reason we did not receive that, but we decided to move forward with the language in there that has to meet the county highway department's specifications and requirements. I think it was mentioned attaching that as an appendix to the ordinance. I don't know where the highway department stands on their current standards and what that looks like, but that was the conversation as we last looked, did I believe?
Yeah, we, we have the same standards in this county for many, many years. And our highway department superintendent does stay on top of that, so that's usually his wheelhouse.
Another issue I might bring up, what she was talking about, I've seen plots be subdivided by whoever and sold off, and then some guy comes in, he buys a lot, and he builds over on the neighbors, and for ten years, nobody says anything, and he maintains that property. He has the right to go to court and do squatters rights, and basically, he now owns that property. So that could be an issue if you don't have a survey.
It's also an issue if people can't read a blueprint or a plat map.
I can agree.
Well, I don't know why it keeps turning off. It could also be an issue because people don't know how to read a blueprint or a plat map. I've worked in carpentry when I was, when I was young and strong, and one of the things that I found is that sometimes people just don't even understand a legend.
And sometimes people do that on purpose, because they know that law exists.
Right, then we have, then we have malicious intent, and that probably could be a felony. I'm just not trying to solve, you know, trying to put in a ten penny nail with a sledgehammer.
I would, yes. Plat maps and the GIS map are both, you know, they're for taxation purposes. They are by no means surveying your aid or a true reflection of your property lines. I just think it's important to mention that those, those GIS lines have gotten better, you know, depending on who's putting them in, but some of them, we've seen them across the road. The parcels are drawn on the wrong side of the road. We've seen them two hundred feet off, we've seen them spot on. But, I mean, they're just all over the place, as far as where they're, and they're just, they're just drawn in near the courthouse, they're going off no true path. So I just think it's important to mention that.
No, I agree. We want the most accurate possible, so that we have the least problems down the road. But there's, there's so much front end loaded into this, and I'm not mad at the surveyors. I want them to have lots of work, but I want them to market their services and have people purchase them voluntarily, instead of having government create a windfall for a particular, you know, type of work.
I guess I'm gonna go on record to say that I feel like strongly that we need the surveys. It's, no matter what we do, even if it's a meet and bound, or whatever, attorney draws it up, at some point, property's gonna change. at some point, property's gonna change hands. It may not be tomorrow, it may not be next week. The property will change hands, and I told my boys that any piece of property you buy, you better have a survey. And I strongly believe that. So, I, you know, I know it, I know it can be a burden, okay? But also know that if it's not done right, that burden's gonna be larger for those people that are buying it. So, um, I just, I feel pretty, pretty, pretty strongly about the survey part as being a positive to help our county, but to help families keep peace is the same, yes, because property is the worst thing, one thing that can, can drive a big nail real quick in families if it's not handled properly. Whether it's surveyed, or it's handed off properly, or whatever, so. Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Connor?
Uh, another concern I heard outside of this meeting was anytime you, you have a land transfer or property's transferred and sold, but it has to be surveyed because of this ordinance, that's not the case. This is only if you're subdividing, so I know everybody, a lot of people when they hear subdivision think of what we're used to, you drive into a cul-de-sac, but this is any subdivision of property. So if you're taking a two hundred acre farm and you're cutting two acres out of it, you're subdividing that property. It's only if you're splitting a piece of property out of an existing parent parcel is when this would be required. If you have twenty acres and you're just selling that property, it is not required to be surveyed, it has absolutely nothing to do with this ordinance. I just, I heard that, and I wanted to make sure it was clear and everybody understood that.
Yeah.
Other than that, Todd, I don't, I believe I have anything unless you guys have more questions for me.
Daniel, do you have some information for us?
Well, I just like, can I address just a couple things?
Yes.
That Lucy brought up.
Please.
I just wanna address, Lucy, wanna hear comments or questions?
Sure.
Better, I'll get a better explanation of that. So, um, I'm just gonna use one example. This week I, I thought I would put together some PDFs of example issues and put them up there, and in about twenty minutes I had close to a hundred examples over the last eighteen months, ever better than I could put up there of problems. But, the question of the legal descriptions, um, just as an example, and we see this all the time. We had a client here recently, Lucy, who spent six hundred dollars for a legal description that was four sentences. An attorney charged them six hundred dollars for four sentences.
Was it accurate?
And then what happened was, they transferred a deed, and they decided that they were going to build a very high dollar garage. Once they got the garage built, the neighbor said, "I don't think that's right," and so they hired a survey. When we did the survey, of course, the line went dead center through this new eighty-five thousand dollar garage. Now, Lucy, I know you're big on property rights, and you're also big on, we don't wanna do anything to hurt our neighbor.
That is my entire philosophy, thank you for recognizing it.
And I, and I have. What happens when these situations arise is now you do involve your neighbors. The cost to do that project originally, had they not got that legal description, they asked me, they said, "What would that have cost?" And I estimated that that would have been around twelve hundred dollars. So, they paid the six, they didn't pay the twelve to do it right. So what happened was, they had to purchase property off the neighbor. They had to get attorneys back involved.
Sure.
In all, it ended up costing them close to twenty thousand dollars to fix the problem. And it wasn't just one neighbor, it was multiple neighbors. And so, what I see is, is when these things go wrong, it does affect a joint neighbor. It, 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 it gets people involved in the messes that they wish they were never involved in. And as far as surveyors doing surveys and, you know, we all wanna be busy, listen, I've, I've been busy for twenty-five years, I don't go any other way. But the point I wanna make to people is, I would much rather survey properties here in Washington County one time the right way. What frustrates me as a land surveyor is how much time I spend fixing problems that should have never cost people the money that they're paying. They have to buy and sell property off the neighbor, they have to, uh, do things about buildings being crossed, they have to get attorneys involved. Sometimes they turn into fights and arguments, and they turn into court cases. And then suddenly a simple survey turns into a massive cost for these people. And I just wanted to address that, that, um, I get the idea of, you know, not get your neighbors involved again cheap up front. But for many people in this county, it ends up costing them tens of thousands of dollars because it wasn't done properly the first time. So I just wanted to address that.
No, I, I absolutely appreciate that. We want it to be accurate, but, um, you know, I always come back to, what were the other things that, what were the other failure points? Because we're addressing the failure point of not having an adequate survey upfront.
Yeah.
And maybe four sentences is accurate and brilliant, um, and maybe the, the person that was doing the excavation and laying it out didn't do their job. So we're, we're plugging the dam with our fingers. But no, I, I appreciate it, I make sure that I've got surveys on, on what I've bought.
The, the thing is, is there is no one, including myself, there is no one who can lay, can tell you where a legal description lies on the ground without a survey. It is impossible. No legal description. You do not know where any legal description physically lays on the ground without a survey, no matter who writes it, even if I write it. Even if I was to write a legal description without a survey, I could not accurately tell you where that falls on the ground. It just cannot be done.
I'm guessing most people don't do what I did when I bought my property, and I went out there with the little wheel and walked from place to place to make sure that my neighbor and I found the pins together.
I wish they did, but, and the reality of it is, is people don't. And this, this is why you have the messes that we have. The one other thing that I wanna address that you brought up, you know, going back to the multiple residences on, you know, that, that's in your current ordinance, it's not being enforced. So, that's nothing new, that's not something that's been created by this ordinance, that's it.
Right.
It's not enforced at this time. You know, I've seen where they tried to divide property among kids, cousins, brothers, sisters, and when they divided them all out, they didn't have them properly done by the ordinance, then the next thing you know, we've got multiple houses across lines. And we've got a situation out here south of Salem right now, where they divided it all up among their kids, they had three kids. They failed to go through even the older ordinance. And now, two of the three kids that subdivided that property have their trailers on the neighbor. So my point is, now look what we've done to the neighbor. Look at the, the cost now that we've got these neighbors involved. To where these neighbors should not have to deal with this. They should've done it right the first time, and nobody would have to deal with it. So, there's, there's other people that this affects, other than just the person, it's somebody.
That is
And that's really who I wanna protect.
Thank you so much for that, that really, that really helps bring clarification.
And how do you find, uh, you know, a dirty old survey when there's a rock here and something there?
Yeah.
I'm lucky mine were big enough and permanent enough that I could find them.
That's not the case in a lot of the ones that I'm on, you can't find anything anywhere.
Are we not using GPS now?
Yeah, GPS is a measuring tool, that's all it is. It's just a very expensive, very sophisticated measuring tool. It doesn't know anything that I don't tell it, that's a big misconception. You don't turn GPS on and it knows where a line is, or knows where a corner is. It's a very fancy measuring tool, and that's really all it is.
Interesting, so how do you make these surveys permanent enough that the first person that does it and subdivides has something that future generations can rely on?
That's a good question. That's why they get recorded. That's why everything in this ordinance will be recorded properly. So every land surveyor in the state of Indiana is required to do a series of research. So, when we go out to do a survey, I'm required to check with your recorder's office, your county surveyor's office, any office that might give me the documentation necessary to do that survey. So when these are done, by Indiana state law, they will be required to be recorded. And once they're recorded, they're there for generations to come.
For sure.
So any landowner, um, if you was to subdivide your property, and then let's say two, three, four landowners down the road, they can always walk into this courthouse and retrieve that documentation forever. And that's another really important reason to, for the subdivision control ordinance. Every one of these plaits are here forever. So like you said, you, you was able to find your pin.
Yes.
Well, now the next person, you know, will be thankful that that was recorded, they'll be able to find those pins. And now that survey is really, really cheap.
Can you tell me when the law changed to where they were required to record the surveys?
I believe, I'll hold me this, I'll go back and look, I wanna say it was around nineteen ninety-six.
Okay.
And the reason I ask that is because, over and over, I've worked in the real estate field for over thirty years, and over and over, we sell property where the seller says, "Dad had that done, we've got a survey somewhere," and it was never recorded. And they've had to turn around and redo it again.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to add that point.
If anybody else, does anybody have any other questions? I, I just wanted to address those things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, uh, we have been through this ordinance with a fine toothed tone. We've been looking at it for close to a year or more. In fact, even, uh, Mr. Adam DeFor has made the comment, he's told me three times that he, and he, uh, he's a self-proclaimed this expert on this because he used to do it quite a bit, writing some of these regulations for the county. I'm very confident that it's fair, I'm very confident that it will actually help people, I'm very confident that it will save people a lot of grief, and therefore a lot of money. And I'd just like to go around the room right now, starting with Danielle Walker, and ask if she has any questions or comments about the ordinance.
Um, I have a few things that are like grammatical. Connor knows how I am, I like it all to be exactly the same, but this is plat here and plating there, I want it to be plat or plating everywhere. So I've got a couple of those.
Yeah.
Um, one of the other questions I have is that we refer to Travis in here as the building commissioner. When I, when he comes to this, I think of him as the plan director. And I know that he wears both of those hats, but I don't know if he will always wear both of those hats in this county. So I question about whether we should change it to plan director or building commissioner, somebody help me, and maybe I'm overthinking that just a little bit, um, there. Sorry, I write lots of notes. I have some questions, and maybe Danielle and Connor can help with this, as referring to something as a plot plan versus a plat. Can you help me understand those real quick?
So, a plat would be your survey plat, a plot plan would be, if the property has been surveyed, and, and every office, Danielle's getting a little different as far as planning and zoning permitting and what's required. A lot of communities allow a plot plan if the property's been surveyed, so you have a survey, you know where the property corners are. Travis would ask for a plot plan showing where the home's gonna sit in relationship to those property lines, and sit along the county road or whatever you guys are venturing from,
Okay.
um, on your front setback, but it's just a visible for him off of a real survey with real dimensions for permitting purposes.
Okay, thank you. Could you plug into the microphone, please? Microphone? Um, it sounds very loud to me from here, so, um. I have some questions under the primary approval of a major subdivision and the, the idea that things are going to be discussed at the next, um, regularly scheduled plan commission meeting. And what is the difference between us discussing those things at the plan commission meeting or also having a public hearing? Both of those are, um, used in here, so would that next plan commission meeting be a public hearing? Or would we have a plan commission meeting to discuss, and then the next one would be a public hearing?
Yeah, that's exactly right. So your major subdivision are, are your over eight tracks, new improvements, streets, potentially super facilities. But, so you would come through with basically, before someone spends a ton of money on a, on a subdivision layout, would, you guys are gonna allow preliminary plan to come before the board, look at elevations, drains, some different things like that, lot layout, streets, before they go in to hire a surveyor and engineer in firm to lay all of that out. And, and basically it's just kind of checks and balances before they go in and look forward to go to the public hearing on that primary approval for a major subdivision.
Thank you. Um, I would like to put something in here, I, I thought about this, what if I turned it into that, or yesterday, and today's our next meeting? It might need to, we might need to put something in there about, you know, I don't think that gives Travis appropriate time to review, it doesn't give us the time to put it on an agenda that's being posted, um, those kinds of things, um.
Well, in the past, it's just rolled over to the next month's meeting. Depending on the time, because, uh, sometimes it doesn't fall like you would want it to.
And you don't have to set that public, you don't have to set that public hearing for the next month. If you feel like they need more time to make changes or get information back to Travis, you can set that down the road.
But most of it's just words.
Okay.
So are you, uh, suggesting that a change be made on the definition of the plan commission director, that's the first thing you
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but it's something that I struggle with, is he serving as the plan director or the building commissioner when he is, is doing this? Which, that's easy enough to Google or to search the document and
I think it's interchangeable between, you know, building commissioner, executive director, plan commissioner, plan director. If we wanted to change that to something along the lines of executive director appointed by the plan commission, because you guys appointed that position, I, I think all of those words are interchangeable.
I believe those are actually Indiana statutes that we can look up, they're very specific about who can be on what board and what precludes you from being on another board to disqualify you. So we could, we could actually use the Indiana code for that.
Well, Travis is appointed by this board though, so this board is established by Indiana code, and then this board appoints a director for the office of planning and zoning of the plan commission.
Right, is that not contained in the Indiana code?
That you guys have the right to appoint you?
Correct.
Yeah, yes ma'am. I, I'm just saying, that title can be of the multiple.
What, where, where is that at exactly, Danielle?
Um, everywhere.
Yeah, it's a couple places.
And then, you know, I don't, I'm not trying, I want to be like Max and have what is in here to be correct. And I understand what you're saying, and I don't want, I guess some of my concerns when I read through this is that if there's a loophole that somebody's going to find, you know, I want it to be as perfect as absolutely possible. That's why I care about whether plat or plating, plot plan versus plat, those things are important to me, it may not be important to anybody else.
Those are prime importance, you're doing a great job.
So, those kinds of things. And then I did miss one thing on page six, um, letter C, I believe five should be eight.
That is correct, yeah, I meant to bring that up earlier, Emily actually called me on that, so it's, it's divisions. Sorry, bear with me. Yeah, so on applicability under minor subdivision, it's the division of land in the more than five, including the parent tract, and no more than eight parcels, at least one acre. Um, and then if you go down to letter CSS parcels exceeding ten acres are exempt and not included, then the five, five parcel, including the remainder maximum requirement, that should be eight, it was a typo on my end.
On C, that should be eight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Danielle, is there anything else?
No, I don't, thank you.
So, back to the director. Is he to be referred to as just director, plan commission director? Anything but building commissioner, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't care, I don't care what he's called, as long as it's what it's supposed to be. No, I don't care, I don't care what he's called, as long as it's what it's supposed to be, sorry. I was not being, I was not being mean. I don't care what his title is in the document, as long as it is consistent and correct, yes. Travis, I was not being, I did not mean how I sound.
So, we don't need to change anything there?
As long as everybody else is fine.
Okay. All right, anything else? Lucy?
So, I'm sitting here and I'm a little bit concerned that we might be operating an illegal board and, um, that I might have some sort of personal liability or exposure to lawsuits as a result of that. So I would like some clarification on the legality of our board. Um, the first one that comes to mind actually is Lori Gilstrap, um, because.
Excuse me just a minute.
Yep.
We are not going to discuss this for the one thousandth time. This has been going on for six, seven years, keep getting accused of an illegal board when we have documentation. I believe she knows what party affiliation she is.
What party affiliation are you?
Democrat.
Okay, but you voted Republican in the last election on the primary?
I sure did.
Okay, so the current law after June twenty-third is that you have to have voted in the primary of the same party twice.
That happened after I was appointed.
Well, you were voted out in January and you re-tricked your oath in February or March of this year, is that correct?
I was appointed prior to that. And I believe, does the law not say the last two primaries?
Yes, it does, and you have a DNA.
Okay, okay.
In the last two primaries.
So then, my understanding was that you go back and you look at the person's history. I have always been a Democrat.
But you voted.
I voted for Republican because I was a Democrat. That's a strategy, a personal strategy.
You know that might be a felony in the state of Indiana and you're just admitted to it? You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to vote Indianically so that our elections are.
I, in Indiana, I am allowed to choose what ticket I want to vote on in the primary, Republican or Democrat. That's by Indiana law.
And then full faith says that you vote for that same party.
Wait, excuse me, we, we are not going to enter into a conversation.
Well, I just don't, I just don't want to be voting on something if there are other members that are voting illegally.
That's your choice.
I'm also concerned.
I'm not concerned because I know she's been a Democrat, she's been a Democrat as long as I've known her.
Well, she's gone to the polls, she's gone to the polls and has claimed herself a Republican.
Right there, she worked for that man right there, uh, when she was just.
But she showed up at the polls and voted as a Republican, so her private behavior when she's, you know.
I voted on the Republican ticket, I did not vote, I did not change my party affiliations.
So, you were affiliated as a Democrat, you went to the polls at a primary.
That is an Indiana, that's the law, I'm allowed to do that.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is ending right now.
All right, it's on the record, y'all heard it.
We're going to talk about the subdivision control ordinance, this is why we're here. We're not here to argue about someone's party affiliation. Do you have anything in regards to the subdivision ordinance that you would like to address?
Yes, I'm completely against anything that would place an undue burden on any of our citizens and I think that people should have the maximum freedom to be free of just the kind of discussion you're hearing here this evening. So, I'm completely opposed to all of it. I want to go back to the old one, make the necessary, very small required changes, and leave it at that.
So can you tell me what you like about the old ordinance that is better than this current ordinance?
Yes, it's very small, less restrictive, and puts less burdens on citizens.
It's also outdated.
Freedom and liberty are never outdated.
It also puts your neighbors at risk.
I'm not putting any of my neighbors at risk, if somebody does that, they can be dealt with individually.
I just want everyone to know that they're not making any more ground. Everyone makes that clear when they fill my office every week, the world is not making any more ground. If you build your property across the line and you don't know where it's at, you just took ground from your neighbor. Either they're going to be nice and they're going to give it to you, or you're going to have to purchase it, we see it all the time. So if your concern is about property and how there's not gonna be any more of it, then you need to know what you own so you don't infringe that right and take it from somebody else. That's all I'm saying.
You're absolutely right, and people should do that voluntarily, they should do the right thing and we shouldn't force them to buy products they don't need.
All right.
Let's go.
Mr. Lyons?
My only concern might be with the admin, it's kind of discriminatory in the fact that you can only build four along with the parent property. And I assume that was based on, you know, what time we consider two acre minimums? What do I do if I have five children? Which, you know, which kid do I leave out? And now that we're down to one acre, which in my opinion should be a minimum acreage, but at one acre, could we do nine children and, you know, plus the parent property?
Yes.
Would that be something we could consider? Because, you know, it just doesn't seem fair if you got more than four kids.
Yeah, so David is absolutely not saying, or saying you cannot do that. It just would bump that in that minor subdivision here where it's being reviewed by the plat committee. The major reason for that is to say you've got a twenty acre piece of ground and what we've seen a lot over the past is somebody comes in and goes, one acre building lots all the way down the road. Well, at one time that was either grass or cornfield or whatever the case may be, and now we've got ten homes there, you know, within fifteen hundred of each other. And that's a lot of hard surface being added to that area. So now where's that water runoff going? I mean, those are just the things that that plat committee has established to review and make sure they're not an issue. If you have a hundred acre parcel or twenty acre parcel and you're wanting to cut two acres out here and an acre out here and five down here, it may bump into that minor subdivision category where you just have to be reviewed by the plat committee or potentially the plan commission if you're splitting ten to twelve parcels. But it's just to add those checks and balances in place to make sure that the drainage, the drainage, the ingress and degress, um, whether or not there's any enhancements approved, that those are kind of all following the ordinance involved in the process aren't gonna be an issue for you or your neighbors down the road. So that is your question.
Marcia?
I just want to say from everything I think we've heard people say about their experiences with their property lines and Danielle saying he had so many examples that he couldn't even give them all, that the old system's not working. As much as we'd like to keep things the way it is, it's not working and we need a new ordinance.
Thank you, Lori?
I couldn't have said it, I couldn't have said it any better than what Marcia just did. It's obvious that the existing ordinance is not working, it puts others at risk, it puts yourself at risk. I totally understand when David was talking about what if you want to give nine children an acre, what if you want to, and that's great. But in seventy-five or a hundred years, they will not own those parcels anymore. I've been in the real estate business for thirty years and I see it over and over and over again. And it's obvious that our existing ordinance does not cover all the different situations that possibly can happen. Our new ordinance still may not cover everything, but ordinances can be changed. I have nothing further to say.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Well, first, a couple of things I'd like to say. I, I thank everyone for coming tonight to hear and have discussion. I feel like that, uh, this board is not wanting to take away people's rights. Some may think that we are, this board is wanting to do that, but I don't feel like that's the case. I think this board is trying to do what is best, I feel what's best for this county and the people in it, and to make it better. If I didn't believe that, I probably wouldn't be sitting here tonight. I've got other things I could be doing, let me tell you. But, I'm here, uh, 'cause I feel I love this county. I want to do what's right for this county and the people that are in this county. Sometimes, sometimes, you know, what needs to be done, I may not agree with. But when we sit back and look, so, okay, what's best for the, the people in the county, it'll all work out. So I'm, this, we've been at this for, for a long time. I appreciate everyone's comments and all, so I hope, I hope. And like Lori says, this is something that can be changed if needs to be changed, but you've got to start somewhere. And like Lori said, the other, apparently the other one's not working, is it because we're not enforcing it enough? I don't know, but this is, this is where we're at today and I think we need to move on.
Thank you. Emily, did you have anything else to say?
I said it when we first started talking about the planning commission, with this document when we brought it forward. We don't want to take anybody's property rights away from you. We don't. But we need you all to know what your property is and where it lies. Because whenever people start investing money into their property and they're building things and they're adding things, and then you come in my office and you're upset because, well, the GIS line has it going through my house. I can't tell you if that line goes through your house or not, I'm not qualified. I'm the elected surveyor that runs that office, that bases those measurements off, the document that's given, reported in our courthouse. A licensed surveyor can tell you where those lines are before you invest money into your property, before your kids invest money into their property, before your neighbors invest money into their property. So if you know where your property is, you have rights over your property. You just need to know that George is your neighbor. And I think that by dividing property and getting a survey when you're dividing it, it will really benefit everyone. I know no one wants to spend money right now, trust me, I'm all about it. But I would like to spend money where I think it's needed to save me money in the long run. Because I saw so many people in Washington County get in a position that they had stopped above them. And it costs so much more money and energy and it causes bad feelings among neighbors and it's hard to come back from. I just want everybody to know that it's not to be mean or hateful to anyone, it's to help and help with improvement in the future.
Thank you. Just some additional information here. Emily pulled up eight counties randomly, all over the state of Indiana. Just to give you an example about how, uh, this proposed ordinance is, you know, it's seventeen pages. It's just very basic, it addresses the concerns that we presently have, it can be amended or changed later. But we're having some things go on in this county that, that are causing people a lot of grief. It's seventeen pages, Fulton County, Indiana, their subdivision ordinance is a hundred and three pages long. Shelby County, three hundred and sixty-nine pages long. Brown County, forty-seven pages long. Ramloft County is fifty-three pages long. Vermillion County, which was adopted in nineteen seventy, is thirty-three pages. Franklin County is a hundred and ninety-three pages. Park County, a hundred and sixty-nine pages long. Subdivision ordinances. Pulaski County is two hundred and fifty-five pages long. This is badly needed. It's my.
I just remembered that was a quick Google search, okay?
Quick Google search.
Don't hold it against me, could be incorrect, I said that wrong, give it those.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of do a supplement that Danielle said earlier, I've worked with Travis for many decades and I just want to let everybody know that I think he is a true professional, he's easy to work with, he answers all my questions very quickly and I, you know, King would be a good, you know.
Yes, I was not questioning him at all. I was just wanted to make sure because in some counties, the plan director and the building commissioner may not be the same person.
You, you'd go to Travis for anything, he's the most helpful guy I've worked with and I've worked on a lot of different counties so I wanted to thank him publicly for all he does.
Everyone on this board is aware of that, we, we don't give him enough at it, boys, I can tell you that. Okay. That being said, at this time, I would call for a vote for the adoption of the subdivision ordinance. All those in favor of adopting it, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 We're recommending it to the board of commissioners?
Yes.
Not a document? We're recommending it to the board of commissioners?
For, our recommendation to the commissioners, that's correct.
Just want to have it be clear.
That's correct. So, once again. Raise your hand, please.
And it's with the corrections we talked about?
With the corrections. One, two, three, six. Six, four, and all those opposed? Two against, motion passes.
Todd, I would like to explain that. I would like to make sure that if we need to add depth, that we do that correctly. If we need to add curvature, whatever was being talked about, I want to double check if that needs to be added. Like I said, I want to make sure it's correct before we do that. I would like to see those things discussed or added and then, um, reviewed again before, um, I would vote to do that. But I go with whatever the majority says, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this concludes the public hearing for the subdivision ordinance. Uh, we are going to speak, um, to the subject of the Miami County Solar Ordinance. But before we do that, I'm gonna suggest that we recess for about four minutes, maybe five.
Okay.
All right. She's right here. Okay, we'll go ahead and reopen, reopen the meeting.
Yeah, I haven't either. No way, not unless it's frozen.
In my haste to get this over with, I failed to ask for a motion. So I think Kevin mumbled a motion, but I don't think everyone heard it. So I know everyone wants to make sure we are heard. So, once again, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance and send it to the Commissioners for their approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I say.
Thank you. All those in favor, once again?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Same? Thank you.
And let's just name who's opposed for the record.
Yep.
So we got two oppositions, Daniel Walker and Lucy Brennan. All others in attendance were in favor.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Apologies. I hope everyone has had a chance to review the Miami County Solar Ordinance. This came to our attention several months ago and it seems to be a fairly good fit for our county. And keeping in mind, you know, I know we can't please every citizen in the county, but I believe this ordinance is something that we need to take a very serious look at because it seems very fair. It has a lot of the aspects in it that we were looking for. A lot of us are concerned about abandonment and what would happen if, for instance, new technologies come along and solar isn't the latest and greatest thing. Obviously, we don't want solar panels all over the countryside just laying there, not being used, decommissioning, if you will. That, that was a major concern. And we want to make sure we protect the rights of the good people that have signed leases with a couple of solar companies. One of them is being represented today by Mr. Owen Speeth. He's been, he's been very helpful to all of us and has answered all of our questions, whatever we asked. And I appreciate him being here and if we have any questions for him here in a few minutes, then we could ask him to come forward. But the main thing is, we currently have a moratorium on solar farms and we would like to lift that, but we can't do that until we pass an ordinance. And we want to make sure, once again, that this is fair to those who don't want to look at solar fields and it's fair to those who own the property and are wanting to lease to the solar companies. We have to strike a happy medium here and do what's fair and right for everyone. I'll just open the floor up for any discussion about the Miami County Ordinance. If they have any questions or concerns about any of the content that we may or may not like.
Yeah, I think the first thing we should start with is Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash four dash two-two-three to make sure that number, that none of our commission members have a conflict of interest. And so I would like for each of us to go around and declare whether or not we have a relationship, a proposed relationship, a pre-lease or any kind of direct or indirect financial interest in any of these projects that could create a conflict of interest. And that is what the Indiana Code that I just signed requires us to do. So I'll start. I have two three-acre parcels. No solar company wants them. I have no direct or indirect financial interests. I have no contracts, no business, no plan for business in the future with any of the, with any of the solar companies. And then I would appreciate if you would answer according to the Indiana Code.
Yeah.
No conflict.
Emily?
No conflict.
None, none here.
None that I'm aware of. No conflict.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you because your microphone's not in front.
No conflict.
Only conflict I might have is I use electricity. No, I have no conflict.
I have no conflict.
Very good, then it looks like we can all discuss it.
Typically, we would sign a conflict of interest form if this whatever would come up. But if we're voting on something that would affect any of us. So we've got the basis covered, thank you. But I'm glad we verbally stated that individually here. No, no one has a conflict.
Yeah, I think it's super important for people to be able to trust us.
I have a question to talk about maintenance on these things. This time of year, everybody's combining and every day that they combine, I have to go out and, you know, pick this much dust off my, all the glasses on your cars and stuff. And how will that affect solar panels and how will they be maintained and maintenance, you know, during that time of year?
That'd be a question for Owen. Owen, would you like to just come forward? I would assume Mother Nature takes care of it, but that's a good point because sometimes it can accumulate.
Thank you for asking. Had me up. Really appreciate this conversation. To your point, Todd's correct, Mother Nature does usually take care of it in our experience. We have not had dust from calibrating be a problem enough that it reduced certain fire generation that we need to handle. If it did, I can only assume that, you know, the panels are, the rose panels are wide enough for a truck to drive through. You know, in deserts, you just drive through and spring them off. About it.
Where do these panels come from? Where do they originate?
It's, we can't say right now if we haven't built the projects. But I can say that they will not come from China.
Will they come by, from India by way of China? Or can we make sure that they are at no point manufactured in China? Because people are really playing around with the tariffs right now. Since the tariffs are so high in China, they're sending their, their raw materials and products to foreign countries other than China and then importing them. It's a very popular strategy right now.
I unfortunately am not the one buying these panels and I, I can't speak to the supply chain exactly of where they come from. All I know is that our company policy these days is we don't want them to come from China.
Yep, that's a good policy to have, given the tariffs. So let's make a note that we don't want our panels coming from China in any way, shape or form.
Do we want them American-made?
Yes, we definitely want, we want American jobs. We want them American-made. Is that feasible, Owen? Do we even make the right kind of panels in, in the U.S. now?
I'm not sure we can do that.
I, I, exactly, yeah.
I mean, each of these projects represent thousands of acres and thousands upon thousands of panels, wiring, batteries, switches, electronic equipment. I mean, I think that it should be a goal that as much as possible it comes, that American dollars stay in America.
My concern also is the amount of acreage that, you know, we're going to take up this farmland. If they were being put off the courthouse or something, you know, it wouldn't bother me. But to take a couple thousand acres out of the loo.
I really want to speak to that too. And it's something we hear every meeting, every, every landowner we talk to, taking good acreage out of production and, you know, why don't we put them on rooftops? The first thing is that there's not enough rooftop space. And I know that seems crazy, but what you need to do is have panels that are close together so you can reduce spend on cabling that connects those panels. The more you have them spread out and the more complicated they are to build, the more expensive the project becomes and then you cannot sell the power. So that is why you don't see, you know, these warehouses on R sixty-five covered in solar panels because they're really not going to make that much money. As far as good farmland goes, I think we really want to hammer home that we're not taking it. We are leasing it from these farmers who are giving an immense amount of thought into what ground they're going to put into this project. And they know the ground that they're putting in there is marginal ground. If it's not, they're in another situation and, you know, maybe they need the money and that's a whole other issue. But when you're not getting at least two hundred bushels of corn out of their land, they know they need to make money on a different way. And I can guarantee you that most of the land we use is that kind of land.
To me, that's a little bit of a concern because a lot of marginal land is where the wildlife lives and, you know, we don't have a lot of that type of marginal land left because our farmers are so efficient now. They can't get the best out of that ever acre anymore or something.
They're getting the best out, but if they leave it fallow and, and they don't farm it, you know, they, they might as well lose money on it in taxes anyways, you know. It's, it's that thin of a margin for them that, you know, they, they are going to squeeze the best they can out of marginal ground, especially talented farmers here. But at the end of the day, they're going to want to make more money on it if they can. And as far as wildlife goes, we use wildlife fences on our projects. They don't block the migration of animals. You know, if anything, on other projects, we've seen more nesting of foxes and deer in those areas because you can't hunt and also you can't put immense amount of pesticides down in, in a, in a solar area. So as far as wildlife goes, it's really, it's not a deterrent.
Are any of these acres, I know you got the project that's about two thousand acres, but I hear Orion, I think it is, that has about eight thousand acres. So obviously you can't speak to them. Does anybody here on the commission know if any of those acres are a water source that is primary for animals that could, you know, disrupt the life cycle of the deer we like to hunt?
We are required to set back from those water sources. We delineate wetlands, we delineate floodlands. If there's a pond, we're not allowed to build on it. It's part of, you know, items requirements. And the US Army Corps of Engineers, it's an immense, it's an immense spend, you know, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars almost. So panels will be near it, but we can't put it on top of those places.
So if there's a pond there, you completely don't use that property, like that becomes?
We would, we would set panels back from that pond.
Okay, and is, and then there's a wildlife barrier there?
What would you mean by a wildlife barrier?
Well, I'm imagining, you know, a big rectangle of panels and then there's maybe a pond in the middle. And so you set back from that so that the pond is available to the wildlife. But now I wonder if the wildlife is now trying to go through a maze to get through that, to that water source that they previously could go anywhere.
There's no maze. There's, what, it's at least forty, fifty feet between each row of panels. I mean.
Closer to ten to twenty, at least twelve. But also these, these panels are, you know, two feet off the ground, up to four when they're.
So the deer are going to be able to go through them anyway?
Yes, and, and also, you know, yes.
Okay, that's cool. I'd heard, and David, you might be interested in this too. I'd heard that in some counties, they're adding excavation clauses to their solar ordinances. And what I was told is that it's common for solar companies to come in and to excavate, to take off the, the good topsoil that we've developed over hundreds of years and then to take that and sell it. And then the idea of giving it back to us after thirty years, ready for farming, is kind of a farce because the topsoil's not going to be there. How does your company handle excavation?
We are required to keep all of the topsoil we grade on that property.
That's good.
And our decommissioning requirement requires us to reapply it at the end of our, our lease.
Cool.
So you are saying that you're required, so is that a requirement of law for that to happen? Or that's just what you hold it?
No, that's just our standard lease.
So we should, we should make sure that that's in there because there are going to be other companies that aren't as forthcoming as Ranger has been. You know, it's interesting because as I understand it, you can all correct me if I'm wrong, the state of Indiana preemptively makes these laws that says that we can't ban solar from any particular county. But what we do have the privilege of doing is landowners who live here, both the ones that lease out their, their parcels as well as those that are the neighbors that might be affected, we do have the ability to, to put in this solar ordinance and make sure that the aesthetics of our county are maintained and that our farmland is maintained. So, you know, our solar moratorium isn't going to expire now for another twenty months or so. So I want to encourage people not to rush into something. I would love to give Owen resolution because I know that there are financial things, you know, behind with his company where they have to invest, so I'm sensitive to that. But I don't also want us to rush in. Solar may look very different eighteen months from now and there's no reason for us to go ahead and do this, you know, immediately to jump the gun. And, you know, we are getting pressure and I do think there should be more stringent solar regulations. These regulations should include larger setbacks, project caps. So right now we have an eight thousand and a two thousand. We already have people pre-leasing this and maybe we didn't want ten thousand. I mean, we've got a nice big county. How much of that do we want to have taken up by this as a percentage? You know, we're looking at our recreational and agricultural zoning in the previous comprehensive plan that was proposed but not passed. So these regulations should include larger setbacks, project caps, rezoning, property guarantees and other measures to safeguard Indiana's agricultural heritage. Non-participating landowners in some counties have asked for a setback of a thousand feet, a property guarantee and a cap that doesn't exceed two percent of the agricultural land. So I think we're at, are we at five hundred and thirty thousand acres? So two percent, that would still put us at ten thousand or less, somewhere around there. You know, did some Googling myself and I found out that Henry County, the commercial solar is not permitted since 2020. That Lake County prohibits ground-mounted solar as a primary land use throughout the county. Such installations are only allowed as accessory uses. In Wells County, projects that are five megawatts or larger are not permitted usage in any zoning districts. Projects that are two hundred and fifty kilowatts to five megawatts cannot exceed more than sixty acres. Rush says larger than three hundred acres not permitted. Fountain County says no unique SES project, that's the big commercial solars, either singly or as a combination of contiguous parcels shall exceed three hundred acres, including required buffers. A three-mile neutral zone is required between unique SES projects. Fayette County, no larger than four hundred. Hancock, no larger than thirty. Madison, no larger than four hundred. So obviously we have a lot of friends and family in those counties that are very serious about keeping the aesthetics and agricultural use. Probably the most interesting thing that I spoke to somebody in a different county about was what happens when something goes wrong and there is a fine that's going to be involved. Now typically, if I do something wrong on my property that goes against my neighbor, then the landowner is the one who's going to be fined. So in Fountain County, they could have a twenty-five hundred dollar a day fine on the owner. So that's pretty serious. I mean, that would take up a lot of your equity pretty quickly. I looked at the Miami County ordinance and there's an indemnity clause in section twenty-one that says indemnification, the applicant, owner and operator of any solar energy system, the SES, shall defend, indemnify and hold harmless the county and its officials from. from, I'm sorry, causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses and liability whatsoever, including attorney's fees without limitation arising out of acts or commissions of the applicant, owner or operator associated with the construction or operation of the PSES or SES. That's great. No individual humans who own property, property owners, landowners in Miami County are going to be identified by the solar companies. So I want you to think about a scenario where there was a twenty-five hundred dollar a day problem, murder rate in this country. And that twenty-five hundred dollars a day, if it ended up on the owner of that property, could in a very, very short time exceed the value of that property, especially if it cleaned up completely or repaired. And so what Fountain County is doing is they are going to do roughly twenty-five dollars a day against the landowner so that they do have skin in the game and make sure that the twenty-five hundred dollars goes off to the SES so that the property who's creating the problem is, bears the burden. Now, the reason that's so important is because those fines that are against your property, where you're going to lose your property as a result of that fine. The county could come in and take that property. Make sure there's a protective in that way. Take property. So I think we need to care for that because that's one thing I identify in Miami County that does not indemnify the people. It only indemnifies us and that's great. You know, we can't, we can't be hurt from that. The individual person can't concern about.
I had one other question. In twenty-five years, what will be the efficiency of those, efficient?
That's usually where we need to be in progress is when the, the cost of everything is, uh, yeah, you know, but you also lose efficiency as well, you know? We're paying a lot for it, depending on what it is at the moment. But the exciting thing, I'll point to that first time to Lucy as well, is that, you know, assuming the panels are, are still, you know, great technology in twenty-five years, which personally I, I do think they will be, you can still sell them, you know? Someone can still put them on the rooftop. So there's, there's going to be a huge resale market for these things in twenty years. Just because they're less efficient doesn't mean they don't produce electricity. Lucy? We're more than familiar with fines against the owner. I, I wish I had the kind of ordinance in front of me, but yes, we would be the ones that would prefer to pay those fines. We've relationships with the landowners that we don't want to mess up. So of course it's our responsibility and that's something that we're more than comfortable having in an ordinance. I did just want to point out that, you know, people throw out these mercury, cadmium, evos things and I really want to hammer home that the panels that we use on these projects do not have any of those materials in them. The only thing we have is cadmium telluride, which is an inert metal. That if it falls in the ground, it is treated the same way as a rock.
Okay, and that's cadmium telluride?
Telluride, yes. So what, what a lot of people hear is a film sprayed on old panels.
Yes, that's exactly what I was worried about, yep.
Yes, we have not used that. And we're more than happy to, to the health is to a standard.
I love that. I mean, you've been so forthcoming and really telling me to educate us. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, another company out there that's pre-leased eight thousand acres and they've never bothered to. With your project, Owen, you had told me that there wouldn't be any batteries, that everything's going to go direct to the grid. I guess, you know, solar panel to inverter to the grid, which is pretty cool. So what kind of noise or frequency vibration can we expect to affect the adjoining landowners?
At this point, we can't say without a, a site plan in place showing the location of the burners. That, that is the only source of noise. Their fans are room enough, no one will hear them except for the landowner that might walk through the parcel. So there's decimal levels that we've been held to a standard in other counties that we can, you know, happily demonstrate. But as far as, you know, exact sound, sound level, I can't answer the question.
I, I appreciate that because I don't know about even when I go to Indianapolis and somebody's booming their bass next to me and it, and it like rattles my lungs, really makes me mad. Okay, so I've been looking at what's been going on with data centers. In like Pennsylvania, there's people reporting that their, their power bills are going from three hundred and fifty a month to nine hundred and fifty a month. The way that they're accomplishing that is not a rate change because the rate change is, is posted as law, but as, they're calling it a supply, a supply charge. So they have the supply charges going up. Apparently there's big auctions where energy is bought back and forth. And I would expect that, you know, you guys participate in those auctions and sell back and forth.
This is, electricity gets very complicated at that level. We sign a power purchase agreement with an entity that is purchasing this electricity. Honestly, that's all as a developer I can say right now. And I would encourage people to research that process as well. That it is very well spelled out and it is complicated, but it's above board. And utilities who are buying these projects have to follow the power purchase agreements. You set a price and you sell the electricity at a price as, as you create it.
Well, it seems really convenient to me. I mean, I would definitely do this. I would definitely send up a solar company to establish these projects, to create a captive power source for which I could only purchase, especially if I were a data center. And one of the things that concerns me as the data center and linked up to the solar, seeing as one would precede the other, is that we have the real privilege of living in Washington County and Harrison County is like us, Harrison County is like us where we have a lot of caves. We have, we talked about the karst topography and what you're doing to make sure that that doesn't hurt anything. But we have an immense privilege. I looked at the wells that my neighbors have drilled in about a mile around me and they're finding water at twenty-five gallons per minute at depths of a hundred and ten feet or a hundred and twenty-five feet. I mean, that is such a privilege compared to, you know, a thousand that they might have to do in Arizona. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is that solar might be the camel's nose under the tent, that we have something. And I really like you, Owen, but this is just something that I've identified as a danger to our community, that we have this captive power source that's solar. It would be natural to bring in. Are notorious for running wells.
On solar and the fact that the data centers would require further approval from, from the BCA. So we are always in the same conversation as these, these days, but I, I'm not here to build a data center, I'm here to build a solar project.
No, that's fair. That's fair. I appreciate the pushback. So when we talk about the decommissioning, we've bandied around words like bonds. Tell me how a bond would work so that we can make sure that we hold you accountable thirty years ago, thirty years from now?
Well, it would depend on the, the amount of the bond that you would want us to pay. It could be the value of the project plus twenty-five percent. Or, you know, I spelled out pretty clearly the Miami County ordinance as well. Or, or the, the cost of a, of an engineer's estimate on what to decommission it. There's a lot of routes there you can take. And then the bond would be given, you know, at a time determined by this, this commission, which, you know, could be upfront. We would prefer it not to be because that's a big expense. It could be twenty-five percent upfront and fifty later on.
Well, the people listening and maybe the people in the, in the gallery don't understand how bonds work and it's basically an insurance policy. So have any other required, any other counties ever required you simply post cash? To make sure that the cash is there because we can accuse you of breaching, you know, the, the agreement with the bond, but then we have to go for the bond company and maybe get involved at the lawsuit with the bond company in order to be indemnified. Whereas if you simply were required to post cash, that cash could be in local banks and because of our fractional reserve banking system, it could allow a lot of lending opportunities for that bank.
You know, I would say that it's a possibility, but it's very expensive. And if you require a company to post a cash bond to build something, I mean, is that a free market anymore? It's, it's tough.
That is a good question about whether it's a free market anymore because.
Excuse me, just, we're kind of getting off into the weeds here. Lucy, you have, have a lot of very precise, specific questions.
I'm asking, I'm asking the questions people not privileged enough to be in the seat. I'm asking the questions that people not privileged enough to be in the seat and be able to ask Owen those questions directly would want to know. Because companies like Owen's have really a lot of experience at creating these projects and creating the leases. But our average Washington County citizen who goes lease is at an extreme disadvantage. They know about this much, much risk that's told to them. And then after these leases are done, after everything starts to come out, they find out the risk is this big and perhaps the money wasn't worth it.
We, we are fully aware of the bonding issue. It sounds like you have lots and lots of specific questions and I'm sure Owen would be happy to answer these. What we wanted to concentrate on tonight, which we're about out of time, people are needing to get home, was the specifics of the Miami County document and whether we will consider it or not.
Why did we choose Miami County?
As a model, I mean, there are ninety-two counties. A number of them have solar ordinances that are much more restrictive and protective of the property owners and the adjoining property owners.
Well, we can look, you can look at any county you like. This was one that is very current. It's one of the most recent ones, so.
It just seems to have a dearth of protection, inadequate protection, protection.
Just an example, that we're trying to figure out where are comfort levels or what things are we willing, what things do we like in one scenario, whatnot? We are not, I don't know enough about solar to create ordinance on my own. And so we're trying to find ones that are successful and build those off of that. And this was an example, one of, I'm sure many that we're going to look at. But we have to discuss things that we're comfortable with. And I hope everybody has done something. I have green, which means I really like that. Yellow means I have questions about it and pink means I don't like that at all, right?
That's great.
And so then we can come together and say, okay, as a group, Danielle and everybody else, we feel comfortable with this, but not that. Let's, let's go and find something that we are more comfortable with.
I love that. In fact, I have a, I have a document with links that's in Google Docs. I'll make it publicly shareable and I'll share it with all the members of the board so that you can have access to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like to say.
Mr. Barrett? This, I, I've looked over the Miami County ordinance and it's not perfect by any means, okay? There's some things in there that I don't like, like Danielle said, some things in there that's good, okay? I'm not here to beat you up tonight, okay? I apologize if you're feeling beat up. So, but anyway, but this is a starting point that we have that we can look at what other counties have done. And I appreciate having this document. I mean, you go online, you go up eighty-some counties that have ordinances and pull whichever one you want and beat it to death. I don't know. But, you know, this, this ordinance, this Miami County ordinance, they have, they don't have, I don't believe they have karst topography like we have. I don't believe, they, they probably got lots of water and we don't have lots of water. I'm not here to debate data centers. We don't have enough water for data center. That's just my opinion. So I don't think we have to worry about data center unless we're going to pipe water in from the Ohio River. So, but anyway, I'm, I'm, this is a starting point and I think we've, we needed to start from here and move forward very cautiously about what we're going to do. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this, to meet, to have this discussion. And with that, I think I'll, I think I've probably said enough for tonight. Probably could save some more, but might not be well received. So, thank you. Furthermore, yeah, go ahead, Todd.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we'll take this up next month and do some more homework and.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Owen, in favor, say aye.